The date is October 22, 2024. The time is 18:04, and I'd like to call the Frederick County School Board meeting to order. We have an agenda before us. Do I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda before us.
Second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded.
Mr. Chair. I'm sorry. It's the agenda, not the consent agenda.
Sorry. Sorry.
Yes. We can correct that.
Did I say consent agenda?
I did, Mr. Chair. I apologize.
You did.
And I move to approve the agenda before us.
Thank you. Second.
Okay, so the motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Madam Vice Chair, what is the pleasure of the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following. One, to review and discuss appointments, administrative appointments, administrative leave, declined offers, dismissals, leave of absence, resignations, staff performance, information only, substitutes and tutors, volunteers, and goals of the superintendent pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A, dot 1.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to go into closed session. It has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're now in closed session, and we'll reconvene around 1900 hours. Madam Vice Chair, what's the pleasure of the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the board reconvene from closed session.
Second.
We have a motion to return from closed session has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move that the best, to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Freedom, Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
We have a motion to certify the closed session and has been properly.
Second.
Now it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll, please?
Dr. Erskine?
Aye.
Mr. Funas?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mrs. Sturdivan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam Vice Chair.
All right, and that is all that I have. Mr. Chair, we do, actually, I take that back. We do have a, several motions out of closed session. I move to approve the personal actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve those items. Has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Okay, so it is 19:05. If you would all please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you for that. We have an ask everyone who is able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have one of our students lead us in the pledge, so if I could please have Bailey Rockwell from Admiral Byrd Middle School come up front, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right, next is a consent agenda, consent agenda. Can't speak this evening. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it has been motioned and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, we would like to pause now and read our proclamations to recognize American Education Week, National Education Support Professionals Day, and Substitute Appreciation Day. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Atkins, would you please read the proclamation for American Education Week for us?
American Education Week, November 18th to 22nd, 2024. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality, and whereas by equipping students with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for the access to a productive future, and whereas education, employees be they teachers, instructional aides, counselors, administrators, substitute teachers, bus drivers, secretaries, librarians, custodians, maintenance technicians, school nutrition service employees, or other support staff work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with the care and professionalism, and whereas schools are community linchpins bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby declares the week of November 18th to the 22nd, 2024 as American Education Week, dated this day, dated this 22nd day of October, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Brian Erskine to read the proclamation for National Education Support Professionals Day.
National Education Support Professionals Day, November 20th, 2024. Whereas education support professionals throughout Frederick County Public Schools are key members of the team working to create an innovative community, where caring relationships and authentic learning inspire all students, and whereas education support professionals support student learning by keeping schools safe, clean, comfortable, and running in good order, working with teachers to help all students achieve to the best of their ability, delivering students safely to school and back home each day, preparing and serving healthy meals so students can focus and learn better, assisting visitors, students, families, and staff daily, and ensuring the smooth operation of the district and personnel budget, staffing, finance, and other essential support areas, and whereas educational support professionals work tirelessly to serve our children and community with care and professionalism. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Frederick County School Board hereby declares November the 20th, 2024 National Education Support Professionals Day, and encourages everyone to recognize the importance of education support professionals in our public schools, dated this 22nd day of October, 2024.
Thank you, Dr. Erskine. And now I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Bell to read us the National Education Support Professional Day proclamation.
With pleasure, Madam Vice Chair. Whereas substitute teachers are an essential part to the education of our children, though they rarely receive the recognition and respect from the community they deserve, and whereas it is inevitable that regular teachers will on occasion be absent, leaving their students' learning environment and educational agenda disrupted, and whereas maintaining the usual level of discipline and tranquility in the classroom is crucial to every student, and whereas every substitute teacher must be flexible in order to adapt to different teaching styles and planning, as well as command the respect of the young people he or she may be teaching on a given day, and whereas on November 22nd, 2024, the substitute teachers of Frederick County Public Schools will be recognized for their valuable and meaningful contributions that substitute teachers offer to the world of education on a daily basis. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Frederick County School Board does hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing Substitute Teacher Appreciation Day on November 22nd, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Mr. Chair, that concludes our proclamations.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We're now at the point of our meeting where we get to recognize our amazing students and staff, so I'll hand it over to Dr. Hummer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good evening and welcome to our Awards of Excellence program. Before we proceed, I would like to ask that everyone stay here through the entire program out of the respect of each individual who is being recognized. Once we have completed all the presentations, you will have an opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. In addition, when you come forward for your certificate or to be acknowledged as a school, please take a moment and pause for a photograph with Mr. Sturdivan and myself, and then move to the right, remain at the front, and we'll take a photo of the entire group being recognized. So now I'd like to call Mr. Sturdivan and I down forward, and we'll get started. And thanks for everybody for coming.
And to start off tonight's program, we're going to start with the Virginia State Fair FCC LA Poster Design Contest. This October, Bailey Rockwell, a student from Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle School, competed in the FCC LA Poster Design Contest at the State Fair of Virginia. Bailey won the competition and received first place. Congratulations. And next up, the Virginia State Fair Skills USA Competition. Students from Dow J. Howard Center recently participated in the Virginia State Fair Skills USA Competition. Here are the results. In the category of auto service technology, we have a first-place team, David Mayer. Along with David, we have Kenny Pearson. Yes. And also in the category of auto service technology, our fourth-place team, Kayden Belford. And Corbin Jobe. And the next awards are for our early childhood programs. All of our preschool classrooms successfully met or exceeded Virginia's quality expectations for the early childhood programs for the 2023-24 school year. Through the Virginia Quality Birth to Five, VQB5, program, staff are focused on strengthening teaching skills and demonstrating quality in areas proven to matter to children's school success. And tonight, we're going to recognize teams from five different schools. From Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School, the school met expectations, teacher Nicole Demus. Teaching assistant Peggy Hughes. Principal Megan Dodd. And assistant principal Jennifer Duckworth. Next, from Evendale Elementary School, met expectations, teaching assistant Shawna Day. And principal Dr. Mike Dodario. Next up, Gainesboro Elementary School, met expectations, teacher Danielle Bailey. Teaching assistant Amanda Onda. Principal Patty Black. And assistant principal Danielle Stors. Next up, Stonewell Elementary School, exceeded expectations, teacher Carrie Ludwig. Teaching assistant Faith McKetchney. And principal Mike Weisbrot.
Mark.
Mark. I apologize. Correction, Mark. That's Mark Weisbrot.
Just don't call him like for days.
And next up, Northwestern Regional Educational Programs, met expectations, teachers Heidi Burton. Alexandra Cooper. Ellen Dalton. Randy Dallinger. Lauren Great House. Tina Knapp. Tara Leskali. Susan Madden. Erin Oh. Assistant Program Administrator Jay Campbell. And Dean of Instruction Roy Martin. And next up, we have two very prestigious awards going to our finance department. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA, presented a distinguished budget presentation award to the Frederick County Public Schools, Virginia, for its annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024. In order to receive this award, a governmental unit must publish a budget document that meets program criteria as a policy document, as a financial plan, as an operations guide, and as a communications device. The GFOA award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting. This is the second year the division has submitted their budget document to GFOA and received this high honor. Congratulations. And there's one more. The division has also received the Association of School Business Officials International, ASBO, Meritorious Budget Award for the past now 12 years. This is the highest honor in school finance and recognizes Frederick County Public Schools for its excellence in school budget presentation and setting a high standard for transparent budget development. Congratulations.
Okay, next up in our meeting, we have the announcements of administrative appointments by Dr. Hummer.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. It is with great honor that we have a couple administrative appointments that we would like to announce. First, I would like to call up Mr. Scott Lichens. Please come on down and join me in welcoming him as our new specialized program coordinator. Mr. Lichens is coming from Frederick County Middle School as their assistant principal. Additionally, Mr. Lichens has served seven years of middle school teaching experience in Morgan County Public Schools. He holds a Bachelor of Arts in Biology from Theele College, a Master's in Elementary Education, and a Master's in Educational Leadership, both from Edinburgh University of Pennsylvania. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Lichens.
Nothing like going first. So first off, I'd like to thank Dr. Hummer, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and everybody here for this opportunity. I'm thankful to have the opportunity to continue to grow as a professional in my professional knowledge, working with students that I am passionate about, and excited by the opportunity to continue to work with the scholars and families in Frederick County. So thank you all very much.
All right, next, we have the new Assessment, Reporting, and Program Evaluations Team as Coordinator of Reporting and Program Evaluations, Mrs. Danielle Stors. Come on down, please. Mrs. Stors is coming to us from Gainesboro Elementary School as their assistant principal. Prior to her time as assistant principal, Miss Stors served as the intervention resource teacher for three years at Gainesboro, and a classroom teacher at Orchard View for five years. Mrs. Stors holds a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education and a Master's of Curriculum and Instruction in Special Education, both from Longwood University, and a certification in Educational Administration from James Madison University. Please join me again in congratulating Mrs. Stors. Congratulations.
I will keep this short, but I did prepare some remarks because it is bittersweet for me. I'm filled with gratitude and excitement and a touch of sadness as I leave Gainesboro Elementary School as assistant principal and take on this new role. This school has been more than just a place to work. It's been a second home for me, and I've witnessed firsthand the incredible dedication of our teachers, staff, students, and families. Their support and encouragement and unwavering commitment to our school community has been instrumental to my growth and development as a leader. I'd also like to express my gratitude to our principal, Patricia Black. She's been more than just a mentor to me. She's been a friend and a confidant and a guiding light, and her unwavering support has shaped me into the educator that I am today. As I transition to this new role, I am filled with excitement for the challenges and rewards that lie ahead, and I'm eager to contribute to the continued success of Frederick County Public Schools and to make a positive impact on our students' educational opportunities. Thank you again for your support and for the opportunity, and I look forward to serving this community in this new capacity. Thank you.
All right, next is Mrs. Jennifer Muldowney. Please come on down. She is the newly established Senior Director of Elementary Leadership. Having served as the principal at Greenwood Mill Elementary School since 2000 Having served as the principal at Greenwood Mill Elementary School since 2014, Mrs. Muldowney also brings with her two years of assistant principal experience and 14 years of elementary teaching experience. Mrs. Muldowney holds a Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education from St. Mary's College and a Master's Degree in Administration and Supervision from George Mason University. Please join me again in congratulating Mrs. Muldowney. Welcome.
Thank you. Members of the board, Dr. Hummer, Ms. Knight, Mr. Goodwin, thank you so much for this opportunity to serve as the Senior Director of Elementary Leadership. I truly am excited about the opportunities that lie ahead and using the leadership in this division to continue to grow our communities, to help support our students. After all, that's why we're here. Thank you.
All right, next up is Dr. Julie Myers. Please come on down. She will be assuming the new role of Senior Director of Secondary Leadership. Ms. Dr. Myers. Dr. Myers recently served in the role as Director of Secondary Instruction since 2014 here in Frederick County. Dr. Myers was a high school math teacher for eight years, prior to becoming an assistant principal for five years, and then a principal for eight years. So a lot of experience. Dr. Myers previously served as Director of Curriculum and Instruction in Chesterfield County Public Schools, as well as holding several adjunct professor positions with Virginia Tech, Eastern Mennonite University, and James Madison University. Drs. Myers holds a Bachelor in Arts in Fine Arts, Communication, and Speech from the University of North Carolina at Greensboro, a Master's of Art in Teaching and Learning with a concentration in Secondary Mathematics from Hollins University, an Education Specialist Certification, and a Doctorate of Philosophy, both in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies from Virginia Tech. So please join me in congratulating Dr. Myers.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stewart-Davant, Chairman of the Board, members of the board, and Dr. Hummer. It's truly an honor to be able to serve in this new role. I have loved serving Frederick County schools and our students for the past 10 years. So the opportunity to combine my past experience as a principal with my background in instructional leadership, it's a great combination and a gift to me to be able to move into this new role so that I can serve and support and work alongside some exceptionally talented middle and high school principals and their assistant principals in schools. So thank you very much.
All right, next, I would like to call up Mrs. Jerry Swager. Come on down, please, as the new Director of Curriculum and Instruction. After 17 years as FCPS's Director of Elementary Educational Instructional Services, Mrs. Jerry Swager assumes the newly established role of Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Additionally, Mrs. Swager was a third and fourth grade teacher at Stonewall Elementary for nine years, followed by seven years as an elementary instructional supervisor. Ms. Swager has a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education from Slippery Rock University and a Master's in Educational Leadership from San Antonio University. Please join me congratulating Mrs. Jerry Swager.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer, and I appreciate no Slippery Rock jokes from the sports fans. Thank you, members of the board. I look forward to the continued work with Ms. Knight and our fabulous instructional team on behalf of the students and staff of Frederick County Public Schools.
All right, last but not least, let's call down Mrs. Julia Vederol, please. Come on down. She is assuming the new role of Supervisor of Elementary Special Instructional Services. Mrs. Vederol previously held the positions of Private Placement Specialist and ESY Coordinator for FCPS, spent six years as a special education teacher, and served as a therapeutic day treatment counselor for family preservation services in Winchester. She holds a Bachelor of Arts in Psychology from Bryn Mawr College, a certification in Special Education General Curriculum K-12 from UVA Wise, and an Old Dominion University, and Master's in Administration and Supervision from the University of Virginia. Please join me in congratulating Julia. Thank you.
Dr. Hummer and members of the board, I would just like to, and Ms. Knight, Mr. Goodwin, and our whole community here, I would like to thank you all so very much for this opportunity. I'm a graduate of Charando High School, and I'm a resident of Frederick County, and I am really honored to be able to continue to serve in this capacity for some of our most vulnerable students. So thank you again for the opportunity.
And, Mr. Chair, that's all I have for administrative appointments.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Radkins?
As everybody's leaving, I'd like to make a motion to take a five-minute recess, bathroom breaks.
Second.
Have the motion been properly seconded? Any discussion?
I'm glad she seconded that. I was gonna drown.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will recess for five minutes. Next up is Citizen Comments. Frederick County School Board is pleased... Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm getting out of my... We have a motion to reconvene.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to reconvene.
Second.
All right, it's been motion to reconvene, properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up is Citizens' Comments. The Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting from members of the public, which include residents of Frederick County, Virginia, including residents of Winchester City, Virginia, FCPS students, parents and legal guardians of FCPS students, FCPS employees and businesses located within Frederick County, Virginia. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes. Those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the chair, a speaker should approach the podium to speak to the school board. Speakers are expected to show appropriate courtesy to the school board, and the school board is committed to showing respect and courtesy to all citizens. Comments that are not protected under the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution will not be tolerated. This includes comments that are vulgar, obscene, threatening, and comments that are intended to incite violence or other breaches of the peace. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. Violation of the guidelines will result in the chair ruling the speaker out of order. Continued violation will result in the removal from the premises. The chair has a discretion concerning public participation at school board meetings. School board meetings are taped recorded for the purpose of clarification and the development of official minutes. This evening, first speaker is Kristi Scarborough.
Hello, board members. Kristi Scarborough of Stonewall District. Well, I'm happy to see that the buffet bandit recovered from his panic attack and made it to this meeting. Oh, where do I even begin? Every time I think Frederick County Public Schools couldn't possibly get any worse, you idiots turn around and shock the [BLEEP] out of me. Frederick County Middle School recently had flex classes, and that flex class was titled LGBTQ+ Kindness. It is worth noting, no curriculum exists for flex classes, which makes this issue even more concerning. Secret discussions were had with students about LGBTQ nonsense, and there's absolutely zero record of it. Groomers. After the news of the pervert flex class broke to the public, Principal Putt decided it would be a good idea to take away all of the flex classes from students, not just the extremely controversial and highly gay and retarded flex class. I mean, why wouldn't he? He, like many of you, don't give a damn about these students unless it's to brainwash and instill your woke ideology on them. But guess what? There's more. If parents thought that was bad, wait until they hear about the politically and racially-driven quiz that was given to students at Frederick County Middle School by Mr. Dent. In general, how much do white people benefit from advantages in society that black people do not have? A great deal? A fair amount? Not too much? Not at all? Here's another one. Do you think greater social acceptance of people who are transgender, that is, people who identify as a gender that is different, a different sex that they were assigned at birth, is very good for society? Somewhat good for society? Neither good nor bad for society? Somewhat bad for society? Or very bad for society? Plot twist, transgenders, just like that second-grade teacher that FCPS hired at Apple Pie, they should all be locked into mental facilities where they are force-fed anti-psychotic medication. So my question for you retards is what the [BLEEP] are you doing about it? Are you going to fire Principal Putt? Putt shouldn't be a principal, nor should he be demoted. He needs to be fired. Now, I would expect nothing but support from Liptard Darrell Bell for Principal Putt. There it is, and his perversion to force-feed wokeness to students at his school. As a matter of fact, I wouldn't be surprised to learn Bell's wearing women's underwear right now. So I will leave it at that. Oh, before I go, Diana, sent any nudes to men that weren't your husband recently, or was that just a few years back? Thank you.
Joseph Brand.
Good evening. It's Joseph Brand from Stonewall District. I would read you the policy regarding nepotism, but it is merely redundant, as it repeats a portion of the applicable Virginia State Code. Section 2.2-3119 is where the policy is based on which makes two provisions that must be met in order for the hiring of a person related to a board member to be legal. The first is that the board member must certify that he had no involvement with the hiring decision. The second is that the superintendent certifies to the remaining members in writing that the employment is based on merit and fitness and competitive rating of the qualifications of the individual, and that no member of the board had any involvement in the hiring decision. When information has been shared here by some of the board members is that verbal notification was provided, and have some have stated that no notification was provided. I have submitted a FOIA request to obtain all of the records necessary to actually substantiate any fact in this situation to shed light on whether Dr. Hummer and the school board has acted within the legal bounds of the law of Virginia. The State Code is not trivial. It does not require proof of any quid pro quo, and does not provide recourse, and does provide recourse if this law is violated. It is a Class 1 misdemeanor with civil penalties applied if this is substantiated and prosecuted. As citizens and taxpayers, we rightfully demand that all official actions are done in keeping with state law, and any reported violation to be investigated. We expect official actions to be above reproach, not allowing even for a hint of impropriety. We expect the best of you. I also wish to address this recent applause that was celebrated with our schools and their accreditations. However, when I reviewed the SOL scores for our county, I was sorely disappointed to see that the ball is, or the bar is so low. In reading, we have a pass rate of 64, writing a 74, history a 60, math 62, and science is a 62. If we were to compare this to our school's scoring system, we would have effectively a D, C, and D-, in the remaining three categories. Of these scores, only writing was an improvement upon the last years. I would ask you, board members, to challenge Dr. Hummer to improve the test scores if he wishes to have a favorable job rating in this district. I have emailed each of you regarding my concerns for this, and my general response was, we need money for a fourth high school, and we need to pay our teachers better. Throwing more money at a bad situation does not provide different results. As I have had conversations with students, teachers, and listened to other parents in this community, I believe we have core fundamental issues that need addressed and do not require spending any additional money or building additional schools. In watching the October 7 Personnel Committee meeting, I was alarmed to see that there was 101 resignations of staff in their first year of employment and 61 in the two-to-three-year category. This must be due to a poor working environment. I'm over time. May I continue? For the year 2023 and '24, that shows that 50% of resignations were the newest teachers in our school system. In the exit interview process, only 11% stated this was for salary reasons, while a combined 40% stated no reason at all, or dissatisfaction with their job, or for personal reasons. This implies a very negative work environment for our teachers, and I wish we would have better support for them and what they are trying to achieve in our schools for our children. If we want to be a competitive county for hiring teachers, we need to understand that we are doing wrong here and cause half of our new hires to flee the first chance that they get. Teachers do not enter this field to be paid handsomely, but to make an impact in children's lives and teach them the information that they need to be successful in life. This cannot be done in an environment with poor discipline, where the students who are disruptive are not properly disciplined, and instead all of the school is punished, as is the case with several schools locking their bathrooms between class periods and restricting access to an online reservation system. I have read the background on PBIS and the policy that has been implemented here in FCPS. I would encourage the board to investigate how well this is actually working for us and the effect on classroom discipline by using these policies that only reward positive behavior and do not impact negative behavior. I would suggest that life without negative consequences will cause more harm in the long run of their life. We are teaching the kids to respond with correct behavior only when there is an incentive for them to do so. How will this translate to their future employment and incentives for work? How will they reach and understand right and wrong behavior and the importance of living with principle? Proverbs 12 starts with this, "Whoever loves discipline loves knowledge, but he who hates reproof is stupid." I would contend that we have hit peak stupid with the high schools having to hold it, or high schoolers having to hold it until it hurts while they wait for their place in line. Thank you.
Gail...
Ferrera.
Ferrera, okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Gail Ferrera from Shawnee District. Thank you, Mr. Hummer, and the board, for letting me speak. Miles, for being my representative. Tonight, I just want to speak about the school staffing that was kind of alluded to earlier here by this gentleman, that I read a Winchester Star article written by Molly Williams on August 12 that stated there are 77 vacant teaching positions in Frederick County, 33 of which are in special education. Katie Freckley, Director of Human Resources for the Frederick County Public School, said our neighbors are getting really competitive in this area because it is very much a critical shortage position. We just not seeing the talent pools are as strong as maybe they once were in the field of education overall. This is quite sad. So I ask myself, why are the talent pools dwindling? Is it the pay? Is it the benefit? I don't think so. I believe the answer is discipline, or the lack thereof. Teachers and administration are afraid of disciplining students because for every incident, documentation must be submitted to the state. If a school generates too many of these incident reports, funding from the state can be withheld. Therefore, incidents are not written and submitted, and teachers must endure being disrespected, spit on, cursed at, et cetera. So is there any wonder why that teacher staffing in public schools is a nationwide problem? Instead of being dinged for discipline incidents, schools should be dinged for failing test scores, as this gentleman just explained about the SOLs. It must be merit-based, not identity-based, and indoctrination must be erased from the Department of Education. Teachers should not be afraid of reporting discipline events. School discipline is needed in order to provide a safe environment for learning. If the school budget passes, our taxes will go up on top of the already higher taxes from home equity appreciation. So my question is, how... So, my question is, how are you going to find additional staff to fill these new positions for these new expanded schools if you can't fill existing vacancies now? It doesn't make sense. So, the high school will be built and expansions made, but they will be empty since staff will be non-existent. Discipline must be brought back to the classroom so teachers are respected, and students can feel safe, and they can learn what they're supposed to learn. Thank you very much.
Robert Gallally, Back Creek District. I had prepared some things, but instead, I want to address the survey that went out concerning white privilege. And another thing with that was, I was watching a school board meeting, maybe a month ago, six weeks ago, and somebody stood up here, and they said something about Mr. Atkins and a private message that he had with somebody. And they were saying that they read that message aloud, and that they're black or African-American, what, you know, whatever it is that we're supposed to say, that their child was deeply just appalled and started crying and said, "Don't say that, mommy. Don't say that word." And so, when that happened, I went to my son, who's 11, and I said, "Are you, are you black?" And he said, "No." And I said, "Well, are you white?" He said, "Well, no." I said, "Well, what are you?" And he said, "Why, I guess I'm kind of tan." And so, my point here is that what this school does, okay, with these policies, DEI, or this little survey, is they are telling black students, "You are not equal." It is telling black students, "Everybody hates you. You never have a chance. You're going to fail in life because of how you were born." That's what these policies are doing. It is overtly racist. It's disgusting. It's terrible. Any teacher involved in that needs to be fired, because that's what they are doing. So, thank you, Board.
You'll have to go back that way, anyway.
All right, thank you. I wanted to talk to you about the displays and flags policy. I agree, educational spaces should contain minimal distractions. I agree that employees should not use the classroom to promote or advocate for their personal beliefs. However, I think your proposed policy seems to be a little too vague and does not take a strict enough stance on this issue. As it reads, "Nothing in this policy should be interpreted to preclude decor and displays related to school-sponsored activities, clubs, athletic events, special events, and celebrations." So it seems that all that has to happen is for the school to sponsor some kind of event or club that revolves around a personal viewpoint or ideology, and then displays of this nature would be allowed. Now, this flag policy really confuses me. It seems like you're trying to make it seem like you're taking a hard stance on this issue. However, it says the flags that are allowed are the American flag, which honestly really ought to be the only one. Maybe the Virginia flag. I notice that's all you got here in this building here. Flags of any US states or territories, flags of any local government, Frederick County, Virginia. Why do the local governments in Frederick County need flags? Flag of the city of Winchester, flags of the armed forces, flags of the public school? Again, why? Why does the public school need a flag? And official flags of countries recognized by the US or directly related to the curriculum? Are you kidding me? So FCPS employees should display no flags, except for every flag in existence. Seriously, Ukraine is recognized by the US, and I don't support it being displayed in schools. Afghanistan is recognized by the US, but I don't want to display their flag. If the students are learning about the Civil War, can they hang a Confederate flag? If the, you don't get me wrong, I don't want to censor the history books. I just happen to believe that you should display the American flag, and you really shouldn't give any other flag a place alongside it.
Good evening, Board. My name is Christian Lapsley, and I'm a senior at Charando High School and Mountain Vista Governor's School. In a world of constant negativity, I'm here to shed some light on something positive happening in Frederick County. In a partnership with the Charando classmate Gabrielle Kocz and a friend from James Wood, Jim Solomon, we created Christian Service Clubs at our respective high schools. The purposes of these clubs are to help community members through service projects in the name of Jesus. Some accomplishments the Charando and James Wood Clubs have done so far are making cards for children in the hospital and those in nursing homes, collecting over 300 stuffed animals for the Middletown Police Department to use in calls involving children, making dog toys for the local SPCA, and working with the Knights of Columbus to help them prepare over 2,000 meals. I thank the Board, especially Ms. Klein and Dr. Hummer, for their support and advice, and I thank you both for making our voices heard and helping us navigate these new processes. If anyone would like to help support us, the clubs are partnering with the ice cream shop Moo Through, which is off of Pleasant Valley behind Chick-fil-A, this Sunday from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM to raise funds to provide Thanksgiving meals to those in need. I encourage you all to go to Moo Through, get a treat, and to remember to mention the Christian Service Club when ordering. Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Chris Davy, Back Creek District. So, as we talked about this LGBTQ plus flex class, I am the one that was made aware of this first, out of everybody. Not because the school likes to give out information about this, but because my son actually will bring home information and talk to me, unlike some kids. So, if he wouldn't have done this, nobody would have known about this, because as we have been made aware, there's no information about this class. It's a private class that was going on. You know, whatever they want to call it of just students, you know, doing this class is a bunch of bullcrap, is what it is. You know, it shouldn't have anything to do with the schools. Now, I do appreciate Dr. Hummer, you know, taking quick, you know, advancement on this issue that we had, and reaching back out to me to have a discussion, so thank you for that. But, we have a spineless principal at the school that I tried to message twice before about the issue. First time, he liked to email back with this Kamala word salad of just explaining what, you know, flex class is, which, great, you know, I already knew what it was. I really don't give a crap what it is. This just needs gone. LGBTQ plus anything doesn't need to be in the schools at all. So, that needs to be left up to the parents to teach their kids, not the school system be teaching the kids. So, the second time I reached out to him, because it happened the second week. So, I reached out to him again. Again, he responds, "Oh, well, this is something that's, you know, going to keep happening," basically. "I can give you guys the emails if you want. I have them all saved." So, but, nothing being done. Like I said, tried to reach out to the principal first. No action at all, you know? So, that's when I go farther. And actually, after that second email interaction, he never responded. Wouldn't respond to me, until the third week, when, again, they have this class offer, you know? And it was every Thursday, is what it is, if you guys want to know. But, this class was offered again. So, I told my son after the second one, I said, "Hey, look," I said, "if it happens again, looks like we're going to the school board." First thing he says when he gets in the vehicle, "Hey, I guess you're going to the school board." So, perfect, thank you. So, here we are, talking about this, and, you know, like I said, he got rid of it, but he did it the wrong way. Instead of getting rid of the perverted class that shouldn't have been there in the first place, he got rid of all of them. So, instead of just getting rid of the one because he wanted to stand up and actually do the right thing, he just punishes every kid, gets rid of everything. So, again, like was stated, we need to just get rid of this guy. He has no reason to be in charge of anything with the schools if this is how he's going to be. So, thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Doty Stottlemyre. You know, I originally came here to speak about the 119P public comment. I'm kind of disturbed about when you put policy changes in there, and you do use the word "should" or "shall." I do understand the difference between those two words. There's a lot of people that don't. There's a lot of people who get intimidated by what they see written, and they have no idea of how much recourse they have. There's a lot of people that would come up here and talk to you about certain issues, or they would reach out to other people to talk about issues, but they're afraid that their kids are going to get retaliated against in schools. So, I just would like for you guys to think about that. I really think that policy has enough rules as it is, and it just needs to stay the same. Don't need to do anything to it. That's just my theory. There's a lot of other issues that need addressing. I think that there's been some good points made this evening by some folks. Another point certainly is that there's a discipline problem in the schools, and that is indeed why you have a teacher shortage, and it's a vicious cycle. And so then, you come to the county for more money, for more raises for the teachers, for more incentives to get them in here, and they still won't stay. So perhaps, maybe, we just need to go ahead and do some addressing of the discipline problems, and maybe that would help to address some of the shortage issues as well.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Ratliff, and I'm speaking as a proud resident, employee, and graduate of Frederick County and Frederick County Public Schools. I am also a member of the Frederick County Education Association, speaking as an individual. I'm speaking on two points this evening. One is sharing positive happenings at my school, Indian Hollow Elementary School. Second is some thoughts in seeking more clarification on the employee code of conduct that is being discussed and voted on, I believe, at the November board meeting. I am currently the Title I Math Specialist at Indian Hollow Elementary School. I've been there the past two years. I'd like to share with everyone some great things that have happened at my school already this year. We have collected almost 300 pounds of plastic for the Trex Recycling Challenge in just over a month. Our school year goal is 2,000 pounds. There are about 44th and 5th graders enrolled in tutoring taking place before and after school. 5th grade students lead our daily morning announcements with the help of our wonderful librarian. We have a very active kindness team consisting of 4th and 5th graders, led by one of our guidance counselors. We recently had our second annual Title I Donuts with Grown-Ups event, last week where we served about 44 dozen donuts to over 300 total people over the course of two days. Students are earning HAWK awards for character traits that include respect and friendship. Teachers are working across grade levels as buddy classrooms to promote community and connection in our school. We have a staff that is always willing to lend a helping hand to pursue all schools' goals and vision. There are great things happening in our school, in our school, not, excuse me, there are great things happening in our schools, not just my own, and we need to recognize these more often. The second topic I'd like to speak about this evening is on the employee code of conduct. A question I have about this policy, were any teachers or other FCPS employees asked for input into this policy? I believe this was drafted with good intentions, but it is lacking some clarity and is subjective in some areas. In the section of professionalism, what is considered moral and ethical behavior? In my opinion, these can be interpreted differently. In the section titled accountability, again, this is subjective. One person may view their actions as being accountable, while another may not. In the section titled collaboration and teamwork, it states that employees are required to receive feedback constructively and respectfully. What is that supposed to look like? Is it appropriate to tell employees how to dress outside of work, or change them, or charge them leave pay or days to change their clothes? This appears to be an overreach of authority. The section called "Help Keep Students Safe" is entirely too short. This is a teacher's priority every day, and should be treated as such. What are the expectations for employees during an emergency? What about student safety in and outside the classroom during the school day? In the "Failure to Adhere" section, this is also too vague. Teachers do their best every day, but should not be worried about their daily actions being interpreted in such a way that may result in disciplinary action. Are there levers to the disciplinary action, like a warning, probation, leave, et cetera? For this policy to promote professionalism and the best out of FCPS employees, it needs to be more specific, so employees know what is expected of them and what may happen if the expectations are not met. Very similar to how classroom teachers share expectations with students. I appreciate your time and consideration this evening.
James Mulder, Back Creek District. These will be going out to all the Back Creek voters. First of all, Chairman, I'd like to know, two months ago, when I walked into the room, why did you call me your boy? It was on videotape. Secondly, these videotapes, there's nothing in YouTube policy saying that language is the reason why they're taken down? Thirdly, y'all want to censor us when we get up here and talk? You don't want us to use cuss words? Mr. Bell, I believe you don't want us to. But, through your phone last month, you said, "SOB, SOB. If you want to take me out, call me SOB. Take me out, call me SOB." But you didn't say SOB. You cussed. That's how you, that's how you make it, express yourself. So if you can express yourself up there, we can't express ourselves down here? That's bullcrap. Also, Mr. Chair, going back to the hiring of your daughter. First, you told everyone that you let Dr. Hummer and Tara Holoski, if I pronounced it correctly, about your daughter applying for the job. Secondly, you come out and you said, you let the school board members know. Two of you publicly said you were aware. Two of you publicly said that you were not aware. Two of you we've never heard out of. And then you said that you signed a piece of paper stating that you had nothing to do with your daughter being hired, but you voted for her. That is doing something to have her hired. You voted for her. You broke policy. Time to step down. Time to get off this board. You don't do anything about the woke agenda that you promised. There are still books out there with, talking about people having sex in the book, 6th graders reading books about kids in college having professors trying to screw them, but they didn't say the screw word. They said the F-word. And then you go look the book up online, it's supposed to be for 9th grade above, 6th graders reading it. It shouldn't be in 9th grade. It shouldn't be anywhere in our school. When I went to school, we might have the D-word in a book every now and again, but not the F-word, not sexual explicit words. This right here is on some of the doors in the middle school. Rainbow flag, safe place. Isn't our whole school supposed to be safe for all those kids? And again, hitting on the LGBTQ club, or whatever they want to call it. That broke school board policy. You need to hold your superintendent- school board policy. You need to hold your superintendent responsible for his employees. If he don't start disciplining them, it's time to get rid of the superintendent also. And in, on everything. Not, not just LGBTQ, on anything. The hiring practices, whatever's going on. The discipline. No kids are disciplined. Thank you.
Clay Perry.
Clay Perry, Back Creek District. I thought I was going to get a break from this. We had five conservatives, or at least it ran on a conservative platform on this board, and here I am back again because I'm seeing things happen in our schools that I don't approve of. I'm not going to shout. I'm not going to call you names. I'm not going to cuss. I'm going to try to be professional about this. I don't think it's going to make a difference. You're just going to ignore me, but I'm going to at least try to be professional. I'm just angry and upset. Angry and upset. You guys ran on a conservative platform. You talked about this books. You talked about the transgender policies. You talked about all these things. You got voted for based on those things, and then they're not happening. At least with the liberal leaders, Daryl, Brian, we know where you stand. We know what you're going to do. I mean, I, Hester was, you know, I liked Hester because at least I knew what Hester was going to do. I get confused with you guys sometimes. Before I get into my points about transparency and transgender, I want to say that lady right there, she won her school board seat over Dr. John Lamanna, the interim superintendent here and the current superintendent down at Clark County, far more qualified on paper. But she ran on a platform of ending wokeness and supporting parents' rights, and that's why she's in that seat today. Thank you, Linda. Transparency. You know, I thought you guys were going to structure things going forward, just like they do at the supervisor's office, where we speak and then you guys respond, so we know you actually heard us, not just ignore us and go about your day. But that hasn't happened yet. Now we're down to one meeting a month. We used to do two. Now we're just doing one a month. I mean, how are we going to communicate as citizens about what's going on in these schools if we only get one meeting a month? I mean, it's just, I don't get that. Did you cut your pay in half? I don't think you did, but whatever. Comments are no longer allowed on Facebook posts. We're not giving advanced communications out to parents about locking bathrooms and some of the other, putting urinals at the Ailer Girls Locker Room. Now, that's been removed, but again, reactive versus proactive. I, I just don't get it, and just like the gentleman before me said, there's books out there that shouldn't be out there. And now we'll move to the transgender topic. We've got surveys, as has been mentioned, in our middle schools about transgender. We've got opportunities for kids to learn about LGBTQ and how to be kind to them and our flex periods. Again, these are getting canceled. Bus 161 had a pride flag. A parent had to notify, you know, and the flag got removed. But all these are reactive. You know, I want to stand up here and say thank you, but I can't say thank you if you're being reactive and you're not being proactive about this stuff. And now we have a transgender teacher at Apple Pie. As I understand, he had a 5th grade class, but was moved down to a 2nd grade class where they believe in Santa Claus because I guess the 5th graders are too hard for him. If he can't do the job, then he needs to be removed from the school. It's as simple as that. We're here to teach these kids. So what I want to ask you guys, especially Dr. Hummer, can we send out a message to all teachers and school employees to just stop this stuff, rather than wait till a parent finds out about it and then deal with it? Let's just send out a message, make it very clear about not indoctrinating our children in our schools. I know I'm out of time, but I do want to say that I believe wholeheartedly that teachers do deserve more pay. I think unfortunately they get used as pawns. I think where the less pay and the less positions need to be in this building here. They're paid too much, and there's too many of them. We need to send more money out to our teachers.
Alina Burdick. She signed up twice. So that's everyone who's signed up. Is there anyone who wished to speak that did not sign?
Evening, members of the board. My name is Brian Nury. I'm a resident of the Upekkin District. Actually, I heard a really good idea just now that made me change my mind a little bit. We should probably send out emails telling teacher or parents that their teachers are gay or trans or anything. Why don't we start doing it when they're black too? Why don't we start doing it when we have uncomfortable topics in school like Black History Month, or the Civil War, the Civil Rights era? You see where that falls? You see where that goes? I think that the flag policy is a solution, is a solution for a problem that doesn't actually exist. We're kowtowing to some of the worst of our community when we should be supporting the least of our community. Doesn't the Bible say something about that? But if you want to go with that, let's go with that. Let's take everything personal out of the teachers' rooms. I'd like every member of this board to look at their left hand. What do you see there? Do you see a wedding ring? Get rid of them. We do not need to know that our teachers are married. Married female teachers don't need to change their last names. Why should we know that that is happening? Pictures? Do you see where this goes? Start supporting the kids. Stop protecting the bullies. We just got out of suicide, we just got out of bullying prevention month. We're just entering suicide prevention month. University of British Columbia studies showed that when you incorporate the discipline with LGBTQ education, you actually see a reduction in bullying and suicide ideation. You see a rise in test scores because the students are willing and able to come back to school because they don't feel like they're going to be hunted down by the bullies. Unfortunately, this board is being allowed to be run by the bullies. And Dr. Hummer, I'm really disappointed. I really, really, really expected that the school would draw a line. I go to Loudoun County, Prince William County, Fairfax County every weekend. I went to Charles J. Colgan High School in Manassas, a beautiful high school, a Taj Mahal, you might call it. Did I see pride flags in there? Couple of rooms here and there. Did it hurt the students? Absolutely not. The students felt included, and they felt accepted. Students are now reporting on their teachers. A poster was removed from a school, a classroom in Millbrook because a student complained to their parent. The parent went to the administrator. The administrator was afraid of the parent and pulled it, rather than saying what it really was, which was a statement of inclusion. You have a teach, you have a parent in this room who has bullied a teacher out of, and bullied a principal into changing their kid's class over what, a tiny flag? Really? Are we that sensitive these days? If you're going to actually go up there and say you're here for the kids, then start doing it.
Anyone else? Okay. Next up is the superintendent report by Dr. Hummer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that. So I have a couple announcements before I give my annual report to you all. So first and foremost, I want to congratulate all of our students and staff for all of the recognitions that were honored earlier this evening. Our staff and students are working hard and accomplishing some really, really great things, and I'm so proud of all of them and looking forward to next month's recipients. I also want to thank the school board, our delegates, Dolores Oates and Bill Wiley, and Senator Mr. Timmy French, and our amazing school team for their time at our legislative summit two weeks ago. It was very successful. We had some really great, rich conversations in regards to how we're supporting our students and school division, and I'm confident that this is going to start something good to make some needed changes at the state level. Looking forward to continued discussions of these matters, as well as future collaboration with our elected officials. Greatly appreciate their support and yours. So thank you for that. I also want to take this time to give a major accolade to our media and communications team. If you don't already know, communication and transparency is very, very important to me, and I'm about getting ahead of sharing the great things that are happening here in Frederick County, sharing out information that needs to be shared, as well as the areas that we also need to improve. Our media and communications department put together a fantastic video showing the different aspects of the space issues at our high schools with interviews, videos from inside our schools to include our operations in real time. If you haven't seen it yet, please take the time to watch it and hope for a favorable outcome tomorrow at the Board of Supervisors meeting. So with that, I'm now going to step down and go over the annual report very quickly. Just give me a minute. All right. So the annual report. This annual report is to review information and accomplishments that we have accomplished last year. This is a required annual report per state code that I'm required to provide you all every year, and we typically do this in October. We have a report that we put together every year, and this is in more in-depth and detail on our website. You can actually go on there and click on that now, so that is posted. Our media and communications teams put that together. So this is just a brief summary and overview of this annual plan, and then, of course, any questions that you have. So I heard a quote today that good educational leaders are what's called merchants of hope, and we are merchants of hope for our students, all 14,500-plus of them. As we continue to grow, we're about providing opportunities for our students. We're about investing in our students to do the great things that we know that they're able to do, and we raise the bar for each and every one of them because we expect excellence from all of them. And if we are to expect excellence from them, we want to make sure that we provide them with the staff that they need and provide our staff with the resources so that they can be excellent as well. So this is just a graph showing the total staff that we had last year. We had 1,558 instructional staff and 479 support staff. We have about 2,500 staff, so we have other staff that support our schools, such as counselors, social workers, and other staff, and of course, we have our administrators as well. And all of these staff work together for the best interests of our students because of all the accomplishments. And we always like to highlight a lot of the great things that are happening right here in Frederick County with all of our students. So a series of them that I would like to share with you this evening. We have students that are getting first place at regional fairs. We also had a group of students that took it upon themselves at Greenwood Mill to do a project, project-based learning project to add adaptive equipment to the playground so all students can have access to, to playground and to have that time during recess. So that was a great accomplishment for those students, and I was very proud of them. We also had a student who received the U.S. Presidential Scholar, which is very rare, and Olivia Judd, we're very proud of her for accepting that honor last year. And then, of course, we're adding on numerous opportunities for our students. We added on the Pharmaceutical Tech Program down with, with Mr. Thompson, who's doing a fantastic job there, and we continue to work at providing students with what we're calling high-demand experiences so that they are able to apply those skills in high-demand jobs. So once they graduate, they can either go to enrollment into a college or university, they can enlist in the military, or they can be employed right out of high school. And we have a lot of those accomplishments that I'm going to share with you here in a second. So a couple of things that I wanted to draw your attention to, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but we serve, we served over 1.3 million lunches. So who knew that we were going to serve more lunches than the Golden Corral? We also traveled more than 2.4 million miles on our buses. 2.4 million. So thanks to our nutritional staff, thanks to our bus drivers and our aides, those are the heroes that keep our school division running smoothly, and we greatly appreciate all the hard work that they do for our students. Next is our dual enrollment courses. So we have students that are taking dual enrollment classes. We had over 6,000 credit hours that our students were able to obtain, so they were able to get a head start on going towards a particular career or pathway, and they were actually saving money. So if they actually wanted to go to a four-year university, some of them are graduating with associate's degrees. So these are the opportunities that we're providing our students, again, being merchants of hope for our students, so we can provide them the skills and strategies they need to be accomplished individuals once they graduate high school. We also had an expansion of our CTE programs, and as you can see, we had over 2,000 credentials obtained. And those were credentials that were, students were able to obtain to actually get one step closer to potentially getting a career right when they graduate high school, or to get a good idea of what direction they wanted to go in. I also want to draw your attention to the 93.5% graduation rate, which is higher than the state average. I told you when I first started, I'm not stopping until that's 100%. We have work to do, but we are above the state average, which we are very proud of. I also want to take some time to really highlight our assets, which is our people. And when we invest in our people, and when we invest in our students, we get really great things. So I want to highlight these two individuals. We have Colby Cook, as well as Deputy Chase Smallwood, who is over at Ailer, and these individuals were actually students of ours. And when you talk to them, if you haven't spoken to them, I highly encourage you to do that because they talk about their experience here in Frederick County and how we've provided them with opportunities to now be able to come back and give back to the community. And I'm very proud of each of them. They're always a joy to talk to, and I highly recommend you to do that. But this is what we need to invest in, and this is what we need to focus on as our kids, because that is our why. That is why we are here, so we want to make sure that we continue to do that. Lastly, I do want to focus on the areas that we need to improve. And we have addressed those areas of improvement with you, and I am dedicated and committed to making those necessary changes that we need to do in order to move the needle for our kids. We are working on establishing additional frameworks. We're working on developing our new strategic plan, which we're very excited about. We've worked on a reorganization. There are a lot of things that we are doing to move the needle for our students, and our team is dedicated and committed to our students to make sure that we are making those necessary changes. And we have work to do. We have work to do. Our SOL scores are not where I would like them to be. Our performance is not where I would like it to be, but we have good staff, we have good structures in place, and we are moving in the right direction. And I'm very proud of that, and I'm also very proud to see the direction that we are going to go in because I want to make sure that we're encouraging the collaboration and encouraging the conversations that we've been having to move our, move our school division where I know it can go. And I'm very, very excited about that in regards to our next steps. That's all I have for you. Want to open up for any questions? And then, of course, this is a required annual report. You can see the full report online, or if you want a copy, we can print that out for you.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer.
Yes, sir.
Questions?
You, you know where to find me if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Unfinished Business. Next, we have unfinished business to include the second reading of Policy 119P, Public Participation at Meetings, and the newly drafted policy 213P Decor Display and Flags.
So, Mr. Chair, before I hand it off to Mrs. Jordan or to you all, if you have any questions, there wasn't, there was one minor change to this, which has been posted on board docs, of course, and you guys are aware of this change. Just want to draw your attention to it. And it was to include the aspect of, of students in regards to the protections under FERPA law with them. But besides that, there was no other changes or adjustments to this particular policy. Is there anything else that we wanted to add to that, Mrs. Jordan?
No, I believe that's it. This is the second reading of this bylaw, so the board is free to take action on this item tonight if it so desires to.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, that the board approve 119P as published.
Second. We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ackman.
At the last meeting, when we had the first reading of this policy, still adamantly against this. I think anytime we give up a little bit of our rights, no matter what they are, that we're not going to get those back. So if we allow this policy to go through with more stricter laws than what's already there, then it's just another way for a government body, this board, to restrict your freedoms. And I'm not going to vote for it. You know, I wrote a couple of things down. It's not the speech that makes people smile or feel good that needs to be protected. It's a distasteful speech, the speech that no one wants to say for fear of being canceled or social backlash, but speech that needs to be heard. We're not going to hear from Mr. Davy, Mr. Perry, the folks over here tonight, Mr. Branch, I believe, with everything that we are doing wrong here in the schools. We're not hearing that. You know, if, if we limit that, you know, people can say, we, we can go, you guys can reach us by email. You can reach us by phone. You can do this, do that. But this is public discord. This is what the whole Constitution was built around, was coming up to a podium and speaking publicly. I know I've got some folks over here that spoke out against me a couple of times up here in the front, over here to the right a couple of times as well, and that's fine. I'm fine with that. Come up. I'm a public official. Chew me out, tear, tear me to pieces. That's okay. But that- Chew me out, tear me to pieces, that's okay, but that's your freedom of speech. You cannot like me. I don't care. I really don't. I'm not going to lose sleep over it. But this is one thing that we have to protect, is our freedoms. Four of us up here have taken a note to the Constitution of the United States, you know, and pledged our lives on that. I don't think, you know, it's, "Ah, we like the Constitution, but, ah, you know, might want to change this or that." Voltaire said, "I disapprove of what you say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it." Now, I don't like Voltaire. He's a communist, but it's my right to say it. You know, but it does still ring true. So, with that, I want to say that I'm against this, and I will be voting no.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Ms. Pines.
Mr. Atkins, I wholeheartedly agree with you, and I want to make sure we're looking at the same version. So, the first version, I 100% agree with you. I was not in favor of it at all, period, because it did say that you had to express courtesy to us. Well, you know what? We ran, and if you want to sit here and cuss at us and say vulgarities, that is your right. That is absolutely your right. That was the first version. So, the version I'm looking at, and Ms. Jordan, please confirm, if you would, to make sure that the most current version, with the exception that Dr. Hummer mentioned, is up on Board Docs. In fact, could we maybe even?
Can we put it up?
Put it up on the board, on the screens? Because I feel, and Mr. Atkins, I'm one of those that raised my hand and took the oath to protect and defend the United States of America and the Constitution. I get it, 100%. I am just having, I'm struggling here to see in this current policy where it restricts any speech whatsoever. There is a part, if anything, I know earlier in our tenure, we enabled individuals to sign up online. And then, also, not only did we add the online signing to make it more accessible to people to speak their minds, but we also removed the time limit, aside from the three minutes and the five minutes, to make it unlimited speaking, so we can be here until 5:00 in the morning if we wanted to. But I'm having trouble, and I'm looking at this on my laptop, so if I'm not making eye contact, that's why. I'm having a hard time seeing exactly where the current state of this policy, after all of the input that all of us gave into this, is restricting speech, because I see a lot of "should," but I don't see "shall's." We took all of that out, because that was in the previous bylaws. That was there, previous administration, previous board. But I'm having a hard time seeing it. If I am missing something, please tell me, because we took out the "shall's" and the "should." We took out the "shall's" and the "will" and changed it to "may" and "should." And after comparing this policy with other conservative schools across the Commonwealth, this is actually more open and allows more people to say more things. Maybe I'm missing something.
Got to pull it back up.
Okay.
And Madam Vice Chair, I did just check. The current copy is on Board Docs, and the public should be able to access.
Okay.
Our wonderful media guys can get it.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Okay.
Caitlin, Ms. Jordan, sorry. Is it on Board Docs where it shows that the changes are in red? Are the changes in red on Board Docs as well?
Yeah. It is the red line version.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, basically, then, just for those of you at home and here in the audience, any addition or change to the original is listed in red. I believe there's one addition that wasn't there before, which is about signs, posters, placards, banners, or like objects are not permitted into the school board meeting. And regardless of whether they're positive or negative, it's my opinion that they don't add anything to the meeting, and in point of fact, they can only detract from the meeting. But as far as folks getting to stand up and speak, I think you saw tonight that people can come up here and talk and pretty much say what they want, including about my undergarments. So, I don't think that we've prevented anyone from being able to speak. So, I don't understand, I guess, Mr. Atkins, where you're coming from with your distaste for this particular policy.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
At risk of being an echo, I just want to add a couple of pieces into the conversation. The reason that I supported and was very much in favor, along with Mrs. Klein, of not moving forward with the first version was because of how vague and how potentially restrictive it was. Anything, in my opinion, which I said at the time, anything that has a chilling effect on free speech is an absolute no-go for me. The reason this newest draft, I think, is much more palatable, and it puts us in line with other professional school, school boards and school divisions, is this. And this is probably the civics teacher in me that Mr. Bell and I have talked about before, that show up to the House of Delegates in Richmond or the Senate, show up in DC to the House of Representatives or the Senate. They have rules of decorum. Every elected legislative body in this country has rules of decorum, and I don't think that we ought to be any different. That being said, I would echo what was said a moment ago about, if you wanted an example of where the boundaries are, I think you heard them tonight. There barely are any. Please just don't threaten people. Don't cause a scene. Other than that, you can make a fool of yourself, Elike. You're welcome to do that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins. To answer the question that I was asked, well, there's two parts. And I know it's not restricting all the way, but why even have it in here at all if we're opening it up? Complaints regarding employees. We just had some employees that, you know, people feel need to be complained about, you know. Why do we even have that in here if it doesn't mean anything? It's a "should." All these "shoulds," you know, are coming in here, and it's nice to have that, but why change it in the first place, then? And then, yes, it does restrict freedom of speech because of the signs and posters that Mr. Bell brought up. If somebody wants to have a sign or a poster up, that's fine. I would just kindly ask you to step to the back. There's folks here right now with flags in here. That's their right for speech, and I'm glad they do. That's a citizen out there that has their own flags, but people out here with hats and other things. Where does that restriction, or where does that stop? You know, so you look at signs, posters, and everything else that's covered in that. What if somebody wanted to hold a poster up in the back? Is that not limiting their speech? Maybe they're a little stage shy and don't want to come up here, but they want to stay in the back, not block the view of anybody else, anything like that? Why can't we have those? And that was one of my points that you and I discussed before. I don't think somebody should be glory hopping from seat to seat or interfering with somebody else's view with that. But yeah, why not have that? Why not have that sign?
So, to your point, Mr. Atkins, the complaints about employees, and it's a "should," you're right. It's more expeditious if, and it's my understanding, too, this will be hyperlinked, because there were some concerns from the public, too, about finding this policy. So, 119 is a policy that's within the policy section on our website. And then, the referenced policy here, it's my understanding that will be hyperlink, so if you want to click on it, it goes directly to that policy. Is that correct?
You mean 124 in here?
Correct. Okay. So, that would put it directly, in other words, someone could click on that hyperlink that's highlighting FCPS, Policy 124P, and then it would go directly to that policy, and then it outlines the complaint process, which it sounds like it takes a long time. It does not. It's more efficient to try to do it this way first than stand up here and disparage a teacher, because then it actually gets addressed quicker. So, again, it's a "should." Now, to that point, if it's not resolved in a timely fashion and you're not happy about it, you need to email us. You need to call us. And then, if that doesn't work, then stand up there and absolutely hold us accountable for not following our own policies, by all means. Now, the signs and banners, I completely agree. I think if we could, if people would be collegial enough to stand in the back, I have no problem with it. The problem arises when we block cameras and block people in the gallery's view, and they can't see. So, I would be amenable to that amendment to this bylaw, but I also, I want to ensure that the policy stays right here as far as the complaints regarding employees, because it's a more expeditious process. And then, it's recorded as well, not only on YouTube, but it is officially documented and can be FOIA'd, and all of the official things that someone would need should legal action take place and should the school need, FCPS need, as a company, as a third of a billion-dollar company, to exit someone's stage left if they do have enough valid complaints from teachers, from anyone, from any constituent about a teacher.
Oh, I agree that we definitely need a paper trail when it comes to disciplinary procedures and stuff with any of our staff. However, tonight, I wouldn't have heard about a Mr. Dent and this quiz until I heard about it here at the podium tonight. I'm sorry, but most people out here don't know how to access our policies, nor have the time to go chase them down to do 124P. If they have a complaint, most of the time, they just reach out to us, right? Or they'll go out and they'll come to a meeting, and they'll address it right there. I understand having 124P. I understand there's a process to it, but I don't want to hold people to that when they can come up here and address their grievances, like as stated in the Constitution of the United States.
We're not holding them to it. It's just a "should." And when it comes to disciplining someone or asking someone to find other employment, it is very helpful to have as much written documentation as possible, and this starts the paper trail. My suggestion, strategy-wise, to folks is start the paper trail, and then, if you're not satisfied with the expeditious nature at which it's going through, which I hope that it would, then definitely come up here. That's why it's a "should" and not a "shall." I removed the "shall" from this, because it shouldn't have to.
And I appreciate that. I appreciate that. It just, if it doesn't have teeth, why does it need to be in the policy? I understand, like, reference it, this in the policy, this is where you could go to document as per our guidelines on 124P.
I think it's going to have some teeth.
Mr. Chair, if I may. The change that you were referring to, complaints regarding FCPS employees should be submitted, for all intents and purposes, number one, it is a reference, but it's a reference to a policy that exists, and the policy outlines the, essentially, the process of you're complaining against a particular employee. This has been in place and hasn't, isn't part of the question of 119P. 119P is simply just referencing that as a place for you to make those complaints. Now, FCPS employees should be, it should be submitted, and, you know, that would be up to the chairman and/or other board members as to whether or not it's gavelled down as far as making those complaints. So, I think it kind of serves as a compromise between those who believe that this policy is limiting their freedom of speech and those that understand that it isn't. So, I'm still unclear as to what the issue is with this particular policy.
But I think you hit the nail on the head with that word, compromise. I don't think we compromise with our rights, and limiting the signs right here, as it says in 119P, that definitely takes away from the First Amendment rights. I also think, you know, not only this, but through 119P, we've also lost something else that hasn't been brought up, except for by one of our constituents that came up here to speak earlier. The online comments have been taken away on Facebook or whatever. I understand it hurts some people's feelings, but when I'm scrolling through, trying to read the temperature of the county and seeing what people feel about a certain topic, it really does help to be able to look through that. But instead, the board didn't vote on this. This was an administrative action where we've not allowed comments anymore. We've taken that away. So, by saying that, "Oh, well, we're just putting this out here, and we're going to, we're making everything real easy for you folks," but we've also taken away their ability to communicate with us on social media, and now we're taking away their ability to communicate using a sign or a placard. What if you have somebody who's deaf or, you know, mute, and they want to have a sign up in the back? Would we disparage against them? Is that an ADA thing? I don't know. I'm just asking here, because I think everybody out here would like to, you know, say what's on their mind in any means possible.
You know, it sounds like to me that we just need to exonerate this thing and leave it as it was.
Exactly.
It was doing okay. And I think what we just really want to say to the public is, please try your best to keep your presence as a mature adult while you're up here, and say what you mean, what's on your mind, and what's from your heart. But if you do otherwise, then that's up to you.
Mr. Chairman, point of inquiry, is there a motion on the table right now with respect to either calling the question or tabling the policy?
No motion has been made.
Yes, there is. There's a motion in a second.
So, it's room, it's like, we're not discussing.
I apologize.
Those discussions, so there needs to be a vote, yes.
There's a discussion.
There's a motion to vote on approving or not approving 119P as it's written.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Madam Vice Chair.
So, Mr. Atkins, you bring up, you actually bring up a great point about being able to communicate if someone can't speak verbally. Valid. I did not think about that. You're right. How would the board feel if we kept the same verbiage that we see here, and we required those individuals to stand in the back, where they won't block the cameras, they won't block anyone's view in the gallery, and then a person with that type of disability could have written on the sign what they need to say?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I want to be very clear on this. If we have any individual with a disability that is attending our board meetings, that they need to reach out to us and let us know, we will accommodate accordingly. So, if you all vote on this this evening, as it stands, and it passes, and an individual needs an accommodation to communicate in some form or fashion, we have to accommodate that, regardless of what our policy says. So, Mr. Atkins, you bring up a really good point, but I just want to be very, very clear that we have to accommodate adults with disabilities that attend our meetings.
Dr. Hummer, I have a question for you. Is anybody out there deaf? No? You wouldn't be able to hear me, but I guess the question I have is, if this gentleman that walked in just now was deaf and needed a sign language interpreter, is there an interpreter in this room right now? I mean, it's a public meeting. We don't have an interpreter here. Furthermore, we don't have anybody in here who can, well, I'm sure we probably have somebody in here who's bilingual, but say, we have somebody in here speaking Cantonese, they have a Cantonese-speaking child who walks in. We don't have somebody coming in here to translate that. I mean, I think we're getting a little off-topic with that, but I'll tell you what I would be willing to do on this. Keep the language, ask the folks to stand in the back with the signs, but reinstate our ability to speak on social media.
Mr. Chair, point of order, I don't believe 119P has anything to do with the Facebook page of our school. Does it?
Not as it stands.
Nor would it.
Why? Is that not public discourse? Social media is public discourse. I get slammed in public newspapers for my social media post. I mean, it was an administrative thing.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, just a detail, whatever you all decide is up to you all, how you decide. I just want to provide a very, a piece of clarification, that our social media posts were not designed for that level of communication, and our terms of service was very clear on that. And there was comments that were made on the social media posts that had nothing to do with people's ability to share their opinions on certain things. There were things on there that had nothing to do with anything, and those are front-facing for our community and for our students. for, for our community and for our students, and that was the reason that those were taken down. It's a feature that when you post something, you can click to say, will you, do you want to allow comments or not? So that, and it was a management issue because of the volume that we were receiving that had nothing to do with that specific post. So, for example, if there was a post about trunk or treat, and then there was inappropriate language using that had nothing to do with anything, we had to monitor that to notify that individual that this language, and first, this language was not appropriate for a school site, and secondly, that this has nothing to do with a trunk or treat. And our terms of service was very clear on that. So it was, as I've shared with each of you, it was a management and administrative oversight that complicated matters. So that is the reason that it was asked to be taken down.
I think, I think that goes back to Ms. Klein's point, a few meetings back, what is, what is considered inappropriate? You know, she brought up FFA, or, yeah, FF, or FAA guidelines, and then versus FCC guidelines. You know, and what's offensive to that gentleman might not be offensive to that gentleman. What's offensive to her might not be offensive to him. So who would be the one to put their thumb and, and their finger on the pulse of what's appropriate? Who's that arbiter? I mean, because that's the person who would be limiting your speech. So if somebody wants to go out there and rattle off something about Ms. Klein or myself or, or Mr. Sturdeman, that, and, or Daryl and his, and his, his clothes from earlier, that's fine. I mean, do, do I, do I, do, yeah, he's comfortable. Do I think Daryl's a bad guy because of that? No. I chalk it up to just another angry troll on social media, you know? And what are we supposed to do, shelter those kids, or do we, as parents, explain that to the kids, that, hey, this is just a dumb comment? This is a dumb comment on social media, and guess what? That makes the parents become teachers, and they have teachable moments in the house. They, we have those kitchen conversations back with them again. I think this is something that we need to have back. If it's something that's getting out of control, don't monitor it. It's not something we should monitor unless there's a threat made upon the school or the children, or the staff.
Mr. Chair. So, excuse, oh, wait, excuse me, I need to go fire off some texts, excuse me. Mr. Atkins, I hear what you're saying, 100%. Just as, as a point of order for the meeting, that, those, the, the social media comments aren't part of this policy. However, I do think that it is worth a deep dive on this board to really feder out what Facebook's policy is. Now, why do I care about that? I wish I didn't have to care about that, okay? I wish I didn't. However, if they do have a vulgar, if they do have, like, in my world, FAA, NTSB, and FCC, I, I don't know if Facebook fits under FCC guidelines. And as a public entity, if we have to scrub, essentially, the comments in our posts for words that are not commensurate with FCC or whatever the guidelines may be of Facebook, and we have the potential to lose the ability to post and inform our community of what our schools are doing, then that's a problem, too, to have everything taken away from us by the, the people who run Facebook. I don't agree with, I'm, I don't agree with it, I'm just saying that's, that's a possibility, and I think it's something that we do need to look at. But for the purpose of tonight's meeting, it's not part of 119P, but I hear you.
Well, I'd, I'd rather, rather it be Facebook take it away than us take it away. I don't want to be responsible for stepping on somebody's voice. And no, that's part of my horse trade on this. We can add this in there, into this policy, we can do it right now with a, with a motion. We can do it with an amendment. It, it can be added back in there, or added in there for social media, or we can just say, cool, and we put social media back up. We can do that as simple and easy as tomorrow.
So, so at this point, what I would like to do, that we have a motion on the table that's been properly seconded. I would like to amend the main motion to adjust the language in paragraph...
Item five.
Five. To allow the signs, posters, placards, banners, and et cetera, as long as they are in the back of the meeting. Now, Ms. Jordan, help me with the language on that, but permit the signs, posters, placards, et cetera, as written in, in subpoint five, but they have to stay in the back of the meeting where they're not blocking people's view and they're not blocking the cameras.
So, if I may, pursuant to our special rules of order, since a motion's been made, there's been a second, if the person who seconded your motion to adopt the, the policy as presented agrees, you can make a motion to amend your motion to accept the proposed amendments to policy 119P presented, as presented, with the following edit to paragraph number five.
Okay.
To read, "Signs, posters, placards, banners, or like objects will only be permitted into the school board meeting if they are held at the back of the room." And if that language is agreeable, agreeable to you, you could say, so moved.
Okay. So moved.
But the person who seconded it has to agree. Is that me?
I honestly can't remember who agreed.
I'm sorry, I don't agree.
So at that point, we would need to take, to take a vote on the motion that was made to accept 119P as presented, and then go from there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to call the question on 119P and close debate.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I move to call a question on 119P and close debate.
I second.
Well, we still have a motion that we have to deal with first.
Call, I think, Dr. Erskine, what you, what you're referring to is calling the question.
Yep.
Okay.
Do we have, deal with the motion at hand, or can...
The motion at hand being Ms. Klein's original motion of 119P.
Yes.
Yes.
That has to be dealt with first, before anything.
Well, I believe Dr. Erskine's motion is to call, is to call the previous question, which is to bring that initial motion back to the table for the board to...
Yes, ma'am, as a superseding motion, that's correct.
And when would we do that?
Right, right now.
Then we have to vote on that.
And vote on the original motion, 119P.
Yes.
Being presented, being adopted as presented.
Correct.
Which is behind you on the screen and uploaded to Board Docs.
So there would be no changes to 119P in this, if this vote is approved, and if it's not approved, then we can go back to the amendment motion.
If, if it's not approved, then the presented draft fails.
Yep.
And our 119P remains the same.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So then we have to vote.
Madam Clerk.
Dr. Erskine?
Aye.
Mr. Funas?
Aye, I'm sorry, aye.
Mr. Atkins?
No.
Mr. Bell?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Okay, I will start over.
Okay.
Okay? All right, Dr. Erskine?
Aye.
Mr. Funas?
No.
Mr. Atkins?
No.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdeman?
No.
Motion fails?
So now, as I understand it, 119P is just the way it was.
That is correct.
And so no changes have been made?
Correct, as of right now.
As of right now.
So as someone who voted yes for it, can I bring it back to the table with an amendment?
It would have to be somebody who was on the, who voted no because they won the vote.
Okay.
All right. I'll bring it up. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I move to amend policy 119P with the language in item five, saying, "Signs, posters, placards, banners, or like objects will be permitted into the school, uh, school board meeting."
But, as long...
But as long, as long as they are kept in the back and not obstructing anybody's view of the meeting.
They're moving around, I would hope.
If they're in the back, it doesn't matter. With the caveat that if this passes, that we bring back social media comments on our FCPS.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can do that.
We can't.
Can we, can I do that?
I don't believe that's a proper, that's a proper motion, because what you're making a motion to do is amend our pub, our 119P, which is specifically for public participation at meetings.
Well, then I'll just let it fail.
Mr. Chair, if, if I can make a recommendation, Mr. Atkins, so the motion on the table is for 119P, you're trying to amend that, and I understand what you're trying to do in regards to like a deal, if, if we approve this, then to give that. If I can make a recommendation for Mr. Chair, for the board to consider, is can we look at reconsidering the, the posts? We're more than happy to do that. It shouldn't be part of any sort of motion, you just asked me to do that, and as I've done in the past, I will do that.
I've asked.
Yep.
I, I specifically have asked you, and I know that it's not a consensus, and I'm not the, the king of the board or anything like that, but if we could get a general consensus right now, I'd be happy to pass this through with the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, just to comment on Mr. Atkins' proposal, in terms of a gentleman's agreement, I'm absolutely willing to support that conversation. I think it's worth having. Regardless of how it turns out, I think that the, this group should be having that conversation and making a recommendation to, to Dr. Hammer.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bell.
I agree with Dr. Erskine. I do believe that we can have this conversation so that we can determine what the will of the board is with regards to the social media and the ability to make comments. I think that's a great idea, and that way we can determine if it's in the best interest of our schools and in the best interest of our constituents, based on how all of us feel about it, and certainly those of you that are there, out there and watching, please reach out to us and give us your thoughts and ideas and opinions on how you feel about reinstating the Facebook posts. That's, this is how democracy works, or I should say, a republic works. So I'm, I'm consensed.
Sounds like we have a consensus.
Well, that's two of us.
Well, we've got a nod here, a yes there. Would you guys be good with bringing social media posts back?
Yeah. Well, having the conversation, not bringing them back, but having the conversation about bringing them back.
Okay.
To be clear.
Well, I'd, I'd like to put a timeline on it.
Sure.
Can we do it before the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
So, Ms. Jordan, can I, can I table this till the next meeting?
Oh, do you mean proposed amendments to 119P?
Proposed amendments to 119P?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chair, I have moved to table the proposed amendments to 119P until our next full board meeting.
Motion has been made, is there a second? Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, opposed.
Motion passes. The next item up is the 213P, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, 213P is before you. We've discussed that through personnel, and we've also had conversations about this with staff, so it is before you this evening as a recommendation for adoption by you all.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I move that we accept the changes to, or I move that we accept policy 213P.
So this is just our first, point of order? This is just our first reading?
Not a Bible.
Oh, that's a good point. Good point. Thank you. Second.
Okay, there's a motion made to accept and it has been seconded, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I understand, this is kind of a contentious topic, right? You know, some people think, you know, we should have these ideologies in classrooms, and some people, you know, think we shouldn't. Look, we're here to teach kids, right? That's it. You know, if you want to have ideological conversations at home, God bless you, you know? You do that, do that on your own time, that's awesome, you know? I, I applaud you for doing that, I applaud you for interacting with your children like that and teaching them one way or the other, you know? That's, that's your call, you're their parent. But to bring that into a classroom, I don't care if, some, everybody keeps talking about, well, we shouldn't be bringing the Bible in the classroom, we shouldn't bring gay rights into the classroom, or transgender this in the classroom. You're right, we shouldn't bring any of it into the classroom. We're here to teach you public education, our test scores are low. So let's get all this other stuff out of the classroom and teach what matters, right? The customer out here is the parent, right? They pay the taxes. The product that they want, at the end of the day, is an educated child, right? The factory is FCPS. We have workers in this factory, right? And they have to adhere to a standard, right? To pump out educated children, right? So if we have stuff in there gumming up the system that's not reading, writing, math, or has nothing to do with it, I mean, it doesn't need to be there, right? It's like putting the wrong oil in your car, right? Does that make sense? You know, so I think, let's get back to the basics, let's teach reading, writing, math, arithmetic, all the sciences and everything else. You know, if you want to teach ideology at home, hey, cool, if you, if there's a club after school, hey, good for you, you know? We just had a gentleman over here at Sherrando who has a Christian club. If there wants to be an LGD, LGBTQ club after school, hey, awesome, do it after school, it's not part of the curriculum. But that, that should be like a parent's choice, so I'm good with going forward with this 213P. Thank you.
So we have a motion, and it's been properly seconded, so we can vote.
So we can just knock it out.
Madam Clerk.
Dr. Erskine?
We can teach it all. Part of the curriculum.
No.
Mr. Funas?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdeman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. That concludes the unfinished business. Now we have new business. Up next is, first is the Personnel Committee meeting. Mr. Funas.
The meeting of the Personnel Committee of the Fair County School Board was held on October 7th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:35 PM, and a copy of the meeting minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Ms. Campbell gave a staffing update for professional vacancies and a breakdown of all vacancies. She shared the staffing update for FY '25 and support vacancies and professional vacancies filled as of 10/1/2024, and the years of experience of new hires. Ms. Rinkler reviewed the celebrations of recruitment effort and gave a staffing update regarding retirees. Years of service from turnovers for all staff from 2023, '24, years of service for classified staff in particular, as well as the top reasons for leavings of classified staff in general, and for year zero and one in particular for 2023, '24. Mrs. Rinkler then reviewed the years of service from turnovers of administrators in the same... in the same timeframe and their top reasons for leaving and discussed the years of service from turnover for teachers and professional staff, as well as their top reasons for leaving in general and for year zero and one in particular. She also gave a substitute update. She shared recruitment and retention efforts and discussed a focus on special education and recruiting plans. Ms. Edward Johnson reviewed the 2024, 2025 FCPs benefit open enrollment season. The FCPs Valley Health Family Care Center open house and two new benefit service partnerships. Ms. Frakely shared that a survey will be sent out to all FCPs employees regarding staff priorities to help build the budget next year. She also gave an update on decor and displays and employee code of conduct. Ms. Jordan shared the timeline of the proposed policy with decor and displays and employee code of conduct. The meeting adjourned at 5:20 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to the board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Personnel Committee meeting held on October 7th?
Can you read it again?
Thanks a lot. I move the board approve the minutes for the Personnel Committee meeting held on October 7th, 2024.
Second. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Next up is the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A meeting of the Finance Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on October 7th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Anderson discussed the contract award for fresh produce to USA Produce and Seafood Incorporated in the amount of $150,309.90. It's a lot of produce and seafood. And to PKG, PJK Food Service LLC, DBA, doing business as Kini Produce and Gourmet in the amount of $114,404.89. She also explained the VPSA Education, Educational Technology Funds and the functions of the finance team, including the cycles of responsibilities and the attributes of a strong finance team. Mrs. Reed reviewed what fund accounting is, the basics of fund accounting, how financial funds are managed, and how fund accounting works. She discussed the fund accounting ERP system and the chart of accounts and the financial information provided to the county. Mrs. Anderson reviewed budget development and financial forecasting, which included Virginia Code 22 dot 1 dash 92 and the budget statutory timeline. She discussed budget development, monitoring, and reporting, as well as budgeting methods, and explained the budget development regarding employee salaries and benefits, the budget development and accounting, salaries and benefits, the budget development and accounting for staff. Next, Mrs. Anderson shared the budget development for non-personal personnel items, budget transfers and amendments, standards of quality for funding, and the local composite index. She reviewed the budget development in regards to state revenue and to county revenue, why localities fund above the required local effort, as well as revenue and accounts receivable and grants management. She also shared information on major school construction financing and financial reports and key performance indicator examples. This included budget publications produced by finance and financial statements of activity compared to budget. Mrs. Anderson also reviewed the KPI, Key Performance Indicator, and the required local effort for operations and the cost per pupil comparison, as well as FCPs' historical cost per pupil by source of funds. Mrs. Reed and Mrs. Anderson reported on audit, risk management, and fiduciary activities. The meeting adjourned at 6:30 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the board, at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Finance Committee meeting held on October 7th? All right, seeing no questions, I do have a statement, just a call to action. I highly encourage anyone to come and sit in on my Finance Committee meetings because they are full of great information. It's been quite an education for me. I feel fairly fluent in corporate finance, but a government entity and a school is a whole nother ballgame. So, I applaud Ms. Frakely, or Ms. Frakely, I applaud, but Ms. Camery and her team, and Mrs. Anderson as well, for bringing it in and being an interpreter for me so I could help equate what knowledge I have of corporate finance to, to school finance. So, highly recommend that you come to those meetings or see, view them online. So, with that, there are four action items. So, here we go.
Gotcha.
All right. I move the board approve the contract award to USA Produce and Seafood Incorporated for fresh produce in the amount of $150,309.90.
Second. Motion has been made to approve the contract through USA Produce and has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? It carries.
And, Mr. Chair, I move the board approve the contract award to PJK Food Service LLC, doing business as Kini Produce and Gourmet for fresh produce in the amount of $114,404.89.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board approve the resolution declaring its intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of one or more grants made by the Commonwealth of Virginia for certain expenditures made and/or to be made in connection with certain capital improvement.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just for clarification on this one, so that, for everyone watching, as well as the board. So, this, we received a grant after our budget was already allocated. So, we are basically reimbursing ourselves and the county from that grant. So, that's what we, that's what the motion on the table is.
My question. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, Mr. Chair, I move the board approve the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on October 7th, 2024.
Second. Motion to approve has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. Next is Buildings and Grounds.
A meeting of the Building and Grounds Committee of the Frederick County Public School Board was held on October 14th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:32 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Davis discussed the Capitol Projects list highlights, including support facilities west, interior door replacement at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School and Orchard View Elementary School, and the bleacher replacement and track overlay at James Wood Middle School. He also discussed notable funded cap projects in progress. The upcoming facility, Snow Day Prep, and the Capitol Asset Planning Process. Mr. Conlon gave an update on the Weapons Detection System program. And Mr. Kenny received, Mr. Kenny reviewed the Omnitrax request for additional, for addition of a scale. Mr. or Ms. Chapman presented the recommendations for a contract award to ECNS, Mid-Atlantic LLC for geotechnical testing and inspection services for the estimated annual, annual amount of $250,000 for a contract award to Smart Building Strategies LLC. It'll be the primary. And SETI and Associates LTD as a secondary for commissioning services for the estimated annual amount of $250,000. And a contract award to Combustion Corp. for the Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School boiler replacement in the amount of $250,897. She also presented the recommendations for a contract award. Oh, yeah, contract award to Combustion Corp. for the Stonewall Elementary School boiler replacement in the amount of $384,063 for a contract award to J.G. Hopkins, Inc. for the Shirando High School boiler replacement in the amount of $300,322,786. And for a contract award to Combustion Corp. for the Bass Hoover Elementary School chiller replacement in the amount of $527,100. The meeting adjourned at 5:13 PM. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Building and Grounds Committee meeting held on October 14th? I want to say thanks to Mr. Bell for stepping in on that one. We were a little bit short for people, so thanks for stepping up to the plate, man. I appreciate it.
Sure.
We have multiple action items coming out of here, just like everybody wants to hear me talk more. Action item number one, I move that the board approve the request from Omnitrax for the in-ground scale and to authorize the chairman to execute all necessary documentation that has been approved by legal counsel.
Second. Motion has been made, properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
A little bit about this one, it's not going to cost us anything. The folks that use the rail system that's on our property out there want to put a, a scale in. That way, they don't have to make multiple trips when they're loading and unloading corn oil. You know, think about it, saving the environment also because we're not making multiple trips, I guess. But yeah, it's definitely going to, we'll be able to charge them a little bit more on rent. So, it's a win-win for everybody.
If I understand correctly, that was for a limited time, correct?
Till their contract's up. At the end of the contract, they could choose to take that scale with them because it is their scale, or they can leave it. But yeah, it's their scale. They're just, and they're doing all the work. It's not a dime coming out of our pockets, but they're, it's their scale. So, they can take it if they, at the end of the contract, if they want.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Carries.
Second, I move that the board approve the contract award to ECS, Mid-Atlantic LLC for geotechnical testing and inspection services for the estimated annual amount of $250,000.
Second. Motion has been made, properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Carries.
Three, I move that the board approve the contract award to both Smart Building Strategies LLC as the primary and SETI and Associates LTD as a secondary for commissioning services for the estimated annual amount of $250,000.
Second. Motion has been made, properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, number four, I move the board approve the contract award to Combustion, Combustioner Corp. for a boiler replacement at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School in the amount of $250,897.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Carries.
Number five, I move the board approve the contract award to Combustioner Corp. for the, for a boiler replacement at Stonewall Elementary School in the amount of $384,063.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number six, I move the board approve the contract award to G.J. Hopkins, Inc. for a boiler replacement at Shirando High School in the amount of $322,786.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number seven, I move the board approve the contract award to Combustioner Corp. for a chiller replacement at Bass Hoover Elementary School in the amount of $527,100.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Last one, I move the board approve the minutes from the Building and Grounds Committee meeting held on October 14th, 2024.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Instruction Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Meeting of the Instruction Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on October 14th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Dr. Myers discussed the addition of 3D art to the Program of Studies for the 2025, 2026 school year. Mr. Cavalier reviewed the addition of Honors Virginia and United States Government, as well as Honors Virginia US History and World Geography to the Program of Studies for the 2025, 2026 school year. Mrs. Post and Mr. Thompson discussed the addition of cybersecurity network systems to the Program of Studies for the 2025, 2026 school year. Mrs. Post reviewed the removal of travel, tourism, and destination marketing and database design and management from the Program of Studies for the 2025, 2026 school year. Mrs. Nicola discussed the four inspired 2025 goals, student success, culture, strategic partnerships, and high-quality staff. She also reviewed the 2024, 2025 school accreditation. Mrs. McDonald gave a special education LEAD overview, and Dr. Myers gave an update on the Grading Coalition. Mr. Cavalier and Mrs. Post discussed a grant proposal for building students' data and computing app, computing application skill set for careers. The meeting adjourned at 7:03 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from the board members about information shared at the Instruction Committee meeting held on October 14th? Okey-doke. We have four action items. The first is, I move the board approve the request to add the courses of 3D art, Honors Virginia and United States Government, Honors Virginia US History, World Geography, and Cybersecurity Network Systems to the Program of Studies for the 2025, 2026 school year. Second.
Motion was made to add the, those topics of discussion and properly seconded. Any, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, I move the board approve the request to remove travel, tourism, and destination marketing and database design and management from the Program of Studies for the 2025, 2026 school year.
Second. Motion was made and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if I may, that, that travel class, I just, it shocked me that we had it. I thought everybody had Google now. We can pick our travel destinations. So, we don't, we don't need, we're not training anybody to be, what is it?
Travel agents.
Travel agent.
I thought it was an extinct word. I'm glad you guys still remember. But anyway, yeah, so I'm glad we're getting rid of that, and we're moving some classes that'll benefit our students. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Carries.
I, number three, I move the board approve the student programs experiences and engagement grant titled Building Students' Data and Computing Application Skill Sets for Careers.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the last one, number four, I move the board approve the minutes from the Instruction Committee meeting held on October 14th, 2024.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is board member comments.
Mr. Chair.
And Vice Chair.
So, first, I want to give a shout out to, to not only our students that were recognized earlier in the meeting, but I want to give a shout out to some special students at Shirando High School who on Sunday had their Safe Trick or Treat fundraising event. I took my two sons there, and it was awesome. It was very well organized. I could tell it took a lot of work. They had three separate lines for They had three separate lines for three separate versions of a haunted house and those kids were all into it, so uh, huge congratulations to the Shrando High School Band Boosters for what I am assuming is a very highly successful event, so uh, lots of care, um, my, my sons are even more solidified in their warrior pride because of it and they ask to go every year, so uh, huge kudos to them. Um, about the uh, just to, just to really kind of hammer this home, our curriculum is key to our students' success. We put a lot of effort, uh, we, this board, of course, we get to approve that curriculum, but our staff puts a lot of effort into ensuring that that curriculum advances our students. So the flex class time was part of that. And I just highly encourage any teacher administrator out there that if you want to deviate from the instructional curriculum, that, that will not go over well with this board as what is clearly demonstrated tonight by public comment, by the way, I want to clarify, the flex time is not part of the instructional curriculum. So I know that there's some discussion as to whether that will be included back in or not, um, still need to get more information on that. But to any teachers or administrators who dare to deviate from our instructional curriculum, that will not be looked highly upon by this board or at least this board member. And finally, as I always seem to, with a call to action in my board member comments, I want to thank Mr. Davy, who's one of our parents, as well as a constituent, because there are only seven of us here and we have twenty-one facilities and over fourteen thousand students. I know many of you in the community think that we're clairvoyant and omnipotent and we are not, I hate to disappoint, we cannot be everywhere at once. We cannot read minds, we cannot see everything. So thank you to Mr. Davy and other concerned parents and constituents for bringing things to light, bringing them to us and being our eyes and ears out there, I think you pointed to your son, so excellent. Uh, but thank you for doing that, please continue to do so and please, parents, please, please continue to be those eyes and ears, bring your concerns to us and we will get them addressed. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Esken.
I just want to briefly a, address a couple of things. Uh, first, it would be um, to, to amen and echo uh, what Mrs. Klein said a moment ago, one of the two most important um, duties of any elected school board um, is to govern curriculum um, a, and finances. I mean this with every bit of respect that I can muster. That final charges on this board. And as was said ear, earlier, any teacher or administrator out there in the county who thinks that they can flout the will of the constituents in Frederick County and get away with that unnoticed, you're on notice. That also won't go well with me. Uh, the second piece I just wanted to address because I thought it was cute, I've been caught a lot of things, never in my life have I ever been called a liberal, so that was fun. Um, I, I, um, my dear friend, Mr. Bell, who I admire very much, uh, and I'm learning from the more I'm on this board. Um, anytime I'm compared to you, I'm okay with that, uh, I take it as a compliment. But as far as politics go, um, being on a school board is a nonpartisan position. If we've ever spent a minute and a half in a room together, you'd never use the word liberal to describe me, but that's okay, I've been called worse. So, uh, that's all I've got to say, Mr. Chairman.
Um, Mr. Chair. I want to say thank you for everybody to come out, you know, everybody voicing their opinions. Um, it's part of that one nineteen P, right, where we're all allowed to come out, that First Amendment right, where we get to go speak our minds, I appreciate that. We didn't uh, we didn't know, which is not a good excuse. Um, so I want to apologize um, on behalf of myself and, and I'm pretty sure the rest of the board feels the same way about um, curriculum that, that is being taught. So, if you had a chance to look at um, our instruction committee that we um, had on the fourteenth, you'll notice we had a review of um, Inspire twenty twenty-five, portrait of a graduate. And, you know, there's a lot of great words in there, there's a lot of, of great things that did come out of that, um, but there's a lot of stuff that wasn't started, wasn't tracked, there's no matrix, um, please, I encourage you to go back and watch that meeting. Um, this isn't the, the old days, I know it takes a while and government moves slow. Um, but I know that Inspire twenty twenty-five is running out. We've got Dr. Hummer, Ms. Knight, who are leading the charge on setting forth our new path. Um, and I know, in a short time, I've got to work with Ms. Knight, I know she's all about matrix, you know, and holding people accountable, so I'm glad she's on the team, I'm glad she'll be spearheading this. Um, so, to echo kind of what the rest of the board is saying, these little kingdoms that, that have been going on with no accountability, that, that ends, that's done, that's done, we're having accountability now, it's accountability time, you know? Um, so, if you want to deviate from the script, go ahead, go ahead. But you can go over to Loudoun County, you can go wherever else you want to go, but you won't stay here. There will be consequences if you de, deviate from the script. Um, our taxpayers, our parents, our students deserve better than that. You know, we as a board, as a superintendent, as assistant supes, set forth a curriculum. You want to go change it? Ain't happening. So, be, like they said, be on notice that you're on notice. Thanks.
Mrs. Chairman.
Mr. Esken.
As with most Frederick County residents, I have a vested interest in the school policies and events throughout the Frederick County school system. I have a son attending Jameswood High School. He's been given the opportunity to follow his future goals through Jameswood High School DTE program. His safety and education is paramount. These fact, that, these factors are influenced by my concerns such as uncontrolled cellphone usage in school. It's a big distraction, but it's being addressed at this point. Student discipline is a big factor. Vaping in bathrooms, locked bathrooms, fencing in school during class time, it's not a good look. Teacher gender confusion and male students and girls sports. This was addressed at this month's Board of Supervisors meeting by Mr. Laro and he put forth that it would be prohibited from males being in female sports, which I definitely back. I find it hard to understand why my son cannot sign his own name in script. Maybe I'm old-fashioned, but I feel it's necessary. Most recent event illustrates how one student, one individual can affect the whole school system. We give credit to our security forces, police, S.O., SROs and teachings there for the quick response to the situation. It was complicated even more with threats being called in from other states. Showing how unpredictable things can be. In that situation and everyday events, discipline is key. A compliance student body is critical in carrying out our goal of good education and safety. Discipline and how to handle unruly students is set by the school board along with the consequences that will result if rules are not followed. Teachers are the determining authority in all the situation and parents should fortify that fact and enforce it at home. Help to staff our parents. As stated in the Code of Student Conduct Handbook, teachers are responsible for stimulating max learning for their students by providing a good environment. They are called to and obliged, obligated to set standards of professional conduct that promotes respect from students. Teachers and students' relationship demand respect, correct grammar and expression, dress and moral habit will aid in promoting better teacher and student relationship. Therefore, teachers have to subscribe to a code of ethics reflecting the highest degree of professionalism and moral standards. That is a direct quote from the Code of Student Conduct Handbook. We need to follow those and try to try to follow it. It's very, it's difficult enough for middle school pupils, six and seven-year-olds to become a stable and productive adolescent without confusing them with a teacher's personal issues. It can cause a major distraction. It is the parent's responsibility to set the moral and civil standards at home, not the schools. There needs to be a code of conduct for teachers and principals. As stated before, the school is there to provide a good learning environment, therefore the school administration and I repeat, subscribe to the code of ethics reflecting the highest degree of professionalism and moral standards and common sense. So simply stated, if there are transgender issues in an individual's life, keep it out of the school environment because they are being paid to teach and not to indoctrinate our children. We pay our tax dollars to have our children educated. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Um, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming out tonight um, and expressing your opinions, I think it's very important that we have this dialogue and that we hear from everyone, from every uh, corner of our county. Um, I think I've made it clear to many that I don't believe I just represent those in the Opeckin District, I represent everyone up here because the votes that I make affect all of you. And some of you may not agree with my votes and that's perfectly your right, many of you do. Um, having said that, I want you to know that I see, I hear and I understand where you're coming from. The only people that I want indoctrinating my children are me and my wife. I don't want, and you have the right to indoctrinate your children the way you wish and that's perfectly fine. Now, with regards to adding programs that involve uh, gender identity, religion, or any of the things that we tend to think as family values, that should be left outside of the school. I believe that if kids want to create a club before or after school, now granted, they do have to have a teacher to supervise, but that teacher doesn't have any role in what they do as far as uh, what they talk about, as long as safety is the paramount in that particular club. Now, I can promise you that the majority of you disagree with how I feel with regards to LGBTQ, but that's regardless. Doesn't matter, we're allowed to have our opinions. But I want you to understand that I agree with you that I don't think anyone should be indoctrinated in our schools and I certainly don't do that in my own school. The concern that I have with uh, two thirteen, sorry, I don't have my glasses on. Two thirteen P, the concern that I have with that, I agree with a lot of what Miles had to say. Uh, but I disagree with the fact that this to me is very similar to the reason, I, I don't support two thirteen P for similar reasons that Miles supports one nineteen P. The fact that I fear that a teacher's individual rights and the ability for free speech would be called into question depending on who the administrator is or depending on who the teacher is or who the student is. Um, I personally don't think that a rainbow flag indoctrinates anyone, but if that teacher stands up and starts talking about their lifestyle and how wonderful it is and how, and if, you know, that to me is not okay because that has nothing to do with the curriculum. It would be like if I flew a Nazi flag and started talking about white supremacy. You wouldn't want that either. So, I teach civics and there are many instances where I have to show different aspects of human, of American culture, um, politics, um, from both sides. And I show them equally, or at least I try to. Um, my students have no idea which side of the fence that I fall on and I can tell you that many of our board members here would also uh, agree with me in the sense that we've had wonderful discussions where I've agreed with what they have to say. Um, and they agree with what I have to say, we are on the same page with most things. Um, I think it's important that we understand for one nine, for, for two thirteen P and one nineteen P, there has to be so the, the First Amendment is, is a very tricky amendment with the freedom of speech. We, we can't really say that we have a blanket freedom of speech. A court case in nineteen twenty-two essentially um, stated that you can't call fire in a crowded movie theater. So there are some limits to free speech, which, when it involves the safety of, of the citizenry. Um, when there, when it comes to public meetings, whether it's here in Washington DC or in Richmond, there's a limited free speech, as long as it doesn't disrupt the meeting, then you're welcome to say um, and do as you wish, but if it's disruptive to the, uh, meeting at hand, to the business at hand, then you um, are out of order and the chairman is within his or her rights to gavel you um, and ask you to sit down or to settle down. And in times of extremeness, maybe even remove you. Um, I'm I'm torn on both of these policies, I voted no on both of them because I am afraid that we are going to beat this horse to death and make it so impossible for for all of us to really understand each other if we don't allow each other to express ourselves in a, I guess I would say in, 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 in a way that's showing decorum, uh, that's courteous. So I, I don't know, it's, I'm, I'm still on the fence with this. As, as with regards to um, what Miles brought up with regards to the uh, Facebook posts, I hope we have a conversation about it. I'm not sure that that is the proper form for people to dump their whatever. Um, but certainly there can be an argument made to speech. So that's something that we all have to discuss and make a determination. What I have biggest concerns about is that well, actually not concerns, actually what I respect the most about you folks that are here, and I'll say this honestly, those of you that come up and speak, Doty, you're one of them, that comes up week after week and I applaud you for that and I respect you for that. I think that it's important, this is your opportunity to speak and express yourself. Now unfortunately, we don't hear from more of our constituents that may have differing opinions and I'm not saying that the differing opinions are right or wrong, but Brian, you come up here every week and you express your differing opinion, your one voice to the many. I think that all of our residents should think about coming to our meetings and talking about how they feel about certain things and so that they can express themselves as well. And if we're here till five in the morning, so be it. Um, and the last thing I want to bring up is just a plug for tomorrow night, tomorrow night, the Board of Supervisors will vote and uh, determine whether or not we will be getting a fourth high school. Um, regardless of how you feel about that, I hope I get to see some of you out there because I certainly will be there and I will be voting in favor of the fourth high school, I've made no secret of that. I think it's important that we understand the growth of our community and see that our schools are the growth of our community and see that our schools are completely overcrowded and there really isn't much of a choice, um, left to us. Um, but with that, I'd like to say again, thank you very much. Um, I know we've been here for a very long time and I'm sure Linda would like to say a few words maybe.
Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You don't have a comment? Okay. Uh, just to address one point, I've been accused of not following through with one of my campaign promises, which was the books. And I would like to correct that situation this evening. If you will review the Winchester Star article by Molly Williams from April 2nd, 2024, it says that I was taking aims at books. If you will review the Winchester Star article from June 4, 2024, it says, "School Board Chair's First Challenge Denied by Two High Schools." I then brought those books. Uh, I got two books, books successfully removed from the list. The third book that I was going after, I changed my mind after actually reading the book and realizing that there was no there there. And the fourth book was brought to the Instruction Committee and I was aiming to have that removed and it was shot down by the two other members on the Instruction Committee, Mr. Atkins and Mr. Bell. So I did try and get some books out of the school. Um, I'm one person out of seven. The next school board meeting is November 19th, 2024. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made properly seconded. Any discussion? We're adjourned.